The meeting is called the Order of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Excellent. We will call to determine where we are at the time.
Ron Truitt.
Here.
Karen Tepley.
Here.
Tom McCarthy.
Here.
Rachel Schultz.
Here.
Melanie Walters.
Here.
Douglas Murphy. Steve Downs.
Here.
Brian Cairns.
Here.
Excellent. Have we got, or was this meeting properly noted?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have been advised items fourteen and fifteen, request for additional funding for municipal building generator and development incentive policy need to be removed tonight. Are there any other amendments? Okay, hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So, vote.
Motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I think Mr. Downs got that before I finished asking. Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Hearing done, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Next, approval of the minutes, once council's reviewed, the June third, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion for Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There we go, second from Rachel. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried. Next up, City and Utility Department had reports and concerns, who's got the microphone now? Well, we're gonna start with Amanda Keller.
All right, so the clerk's office, we have licenses, for the most part, they're distributed, and everybody's happy. We're still getting an operator licenses, some of those expired yesterday. We do need, it's important that the public understands that food trucks really do need to have a municipal license, and so that's a matter of education, we just wanna get the word out, that if a food truck is gonna operate within the city, they really do, or peddlers, they really do need to have a license through the city, so any business happening, they really should check with our office. Despite no elections going on, we're working on our four-year maintenance with the state to clean up the voter record, and I will be attending the UW Clerks Institute later this month, so I'll be an even better clerk after that.
Thanks, Amanda. Missy, do you have anything tonight?
I have a line item on the agenda, Mayor. Would you like me to wait?
We'll do that when we get to that, but anything else you wanna tell the people?
Just working on financials, so still working on audit stuff and reconciling, and working on some standard operating procedures, and working with the fund staff at the City of Ritz and Center is amazing.
Awesome. Mr. Glenn Brenner.
Yes, so in economic development, we continue work on congressional-directed spending grants with three potential projects, CDI grant Los Amigos, that one's closing up, and we did just finalize the agreement with another CDI grant for Wild Honey Collective for two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, so that one is official. Panorama Estates, we're now expecting an August start. Ellers is engaged in financial review of the potential hotel project, and we are expecting their final report within the week. Public Works, we continue to work on the airport and airport master planning, did a whole meeting out there for airport master inspection with Bureau of Aeronautics Agent Hal Davis, where they just kinda review all of our statistics and data surrounding the airport, so it's properly published. Lot of agenda items tonight, we'll cover those later. We have another great collaborative effort today, Miss Tess, our forester, had identified some trees that were problems. I put out a request yesterday, said, hey, maybe Streets and Utilities could work on it, Scott had it done before I think I got up this morning, so, you know, his team and Streets worked together to take the hazard tree out that could have fallen into the street and take off some other branches, so, really good work. Buildings and Grounds, we're really working hard right now to review and update a lot of standards and procedures, and at the same time trying to make sure everything looks good. I think we did get some compliments on how things looked, we know there's still room for improvement, but I think Thunderfest came off very well, and in general, the grounds look pretty solid, so, we're happy about that. Streets are working on cracked ceiling, street cleaning, dike and stormwater channel maintenance, all these things are pretty recurring, and that's what I have for tonight.
Jason Wayne, I'm gonna ask you, and if someone else has more knowledge, that's fine, they can jump in, who needs or deserves recognition for the American flags that are now on display throughout the downtown? Tell us about how that came to be.
Yeah, so that was an initiative that was started by the Chamber. Christie Adsett really was the one that was in charge. Scott and I talked about that, so the three of us collaborated, I wanna, you know, we wanna make sure when we're allowing new signs up that we're not burning out our utility team, because they're the ones that have the equipment to get it up there, and they're actually, they're poles. So, we collaborated, the Chamber then made the donation of all the flags and poles, I assisted in, you know, making sure that the, you know, that aesthetically looked well and matched our branding policy, and so together it was a team effort, but the Chamber was the major donor for that program.
Thank you, Jason. We need to move the microphone to Mr. Richard.
I'm number six, I'll ask this guy.
Scott, go.
Good evening. Electric and Water, continue with the AMI project, Colt Johnson, our youngest water employee, fiance moved back to Minnesota, last day was June twentieth, we did interviews, put an offer out to Derek Truitt, will be starting July fourteenth, he comes to us from maintenance at Cardinal, excited about getting him on board, also from Water, exercising valves, hydrant flushing is coming up this month, and then Steve mentioned to let residents know if you do have hydrants near your home, please, we need, with all the moisture, and Jason struggled with getting the grass mowed, the fire hydrants are getting consumed if people aren't taking care of them, so our staff does go out in areas that aren't mowed and does that. From the electric side, we had some storm damage last Monday, the twenty-third, Valley View area, like a five-hour outage, had a tree take our roof base down on a pole, we've had two frontier incidents in the last week, one on Saturday, and one last week where semis have clipped the low cable, luckily, no poles have been broke, but there was seven cars damaged in the city parking lot downtown, and then the one on Saturday was on Sexton Road, which would have taken out the electric's biggest customer of Schreiber, but luckily, the semi driver noticed it and stopped, so we did have a digger truck, and we straightened that pole up, and it wasn't broke Monday morning. Assisting with the parks, we're mowing inside the old sewer plant, wastewater's gonna take care of that, and the brewer sub, we mowed today, helping out and working together on where we're gonna go for the future of that. Other than that, wastewater, wet industry, we talked about that, it's still online, we did receive one hundred and ninety-five thousand gallons one day last one, or last week, I'm sorry, so that's going really well, I think we're right at what we can take and max out the facility down there, and they're out jetting, and everything else is kinda, just busy, summertime.
So, on the wet industry, we're still in a testing phase, correct?
We are.
And we have any idea how many more tests, how much longer till we?
I think we've hit where the magic number is when I was talking to Todd today, that's about what we can take.
I guess what I'm asking is, the potential customer, you know where they're at, or where that decision is?
We're gonna meet with them this week, but, you know, nothing's formal, but they have been online since, I believe, May fourth, so it's great for the utility of revenue monthly, for sure.
Certainly would be.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Mr. Jones.
Good evening. Well, so I got to, I guess, the biggest thing on our, on our future here is August fifth is National Night Out, so, here's my plea to the council to maybe look at the calendar for their next month, the council meeting, and adjust that a little bit, so you guys can enjoy the night out with first responders involved, so. Other than that, I got an update, we have a potential candidate rolling through the police department, I don't have a name yet that I can share, but we are just completing a background check, and we are beginning, or we have scheduled appointment for a psychological examination, or psychological evaluation for employment, so hopefully by June ninth, should be able to share, share good news with a, with a new hire at the police department. And then I just wanted to share some numbers, these numbers are just a little bit, what I did not get to share was safety, because we didn't have all of our, our June numbers in yesterday when we met, but June came in at two-hundred-and-three total calls for the, for the month of June for the police department, we made nineteen criminal arrests in the city, we issued three municipal ordinance citations, we made one juvenile referral, issued seventeen traffic citations for the month of June, and we also made two warrant arrests in the city, so, just wanted to share those numbers to pass on to the next folks.
Hey, how did cops and bombers go? We never really talked about that.
Really, really well, yeah, well attended, I think we ended up with eighty-eight children there, but then plus their, their families and adults and grandparents and everybody else that came out to it, joy, gave away a lot, a lot of fishing poles and lure boxes that were donated from Walsh's Ace Hardware, a little bit from Walmart, so it was great, I think we cooked, we cooked close to a hundred hot dogs, we had to go through them all, but we cooked close to a hundred hot dogs, so a lot of smiling faces and a lot of good time, so we enjoyed it.
Marty, you're doing your annual report tonight, in light of that, do you wanna just wait until then, or do you have a quick update you'd like to share before you do your annual report?
I, yeah, it's probably two different discussions.
Okay.
Yeah, so, as far as tourism here, I, this is the time of year when the schedule runs, me, I don't run the schedule, so, because we have so many different things happening in June, and it's really been busy, and you'll hear me tonight talk, not just about the city, but things happening out in the county, because our tourism entity does include six different municipalities, and, you know, the rodeo parade went great, I didn't get any calls about horses leaving deposits in yards, and so that's a, sorry, but that's a victory, because that's usually, or has been an issue in the past, we also, the rodeo themselves told me they did very well, they have ninety participants this year, which is, they, for a little history, prior to COVID, they were a little concerned, participation was getting a little weak, now, they're up in numbers that they didn't have for a few years, so they're really happy about the strength of participation there. The parade, we had more units than we've had, we, we keep gaining units, which is nice, and I always kinda count on the military flight fares, because they get to see the first pass-through of how many people there are, and they felt this year was much better attended than it's been, and it's kept growing, and I do know from video that downtown area was populated a lot more than it has been in the past, so, really good news there, I can't, the dairy breakfast, I gotta mention this, I know Steve witnessed some of that, mayhem, we fed over five thousand people, it's five thousand one hundred and twenty-five people, that does not count anybody under the age of five, and I personally greeted every one of them that came, not really, but it was close, what I was impressed by was the number of people that came in from out of the area, there were a lot of visitors that came, came to the dairy breakfast, easy access, it's on State Highway fourteen, so that was huge, you know, Thunderfest didn't go off well, Taste of the Hills struggled a little bit because of the weather, it was interesting, they had the same number of attendees, but their revenue wasn't as high, but it's, that was a pretty miserable day, we need to put, bring the pool over and have it right there, maybe, the water slide, but, other than that, this year so far, other than some weather conflicts, it's been a little bit of tough, I will put in a little bit of Southwest Partners has kind of taken more of the leading role in making sure the Pine River is navigable, that's been a concern, Mark McCauley, who's been a great steward of the pine, kinda showed us what a jewel it is in being able to kayak, see the rock formations for ten years, he did that work with some friends, Greater Ritz and Tourism did, and Ritz and Center Tourism Commission did have a grant to help support that effort the last few years, and Mark has decided that that was enough, beating himself up with that work, it's physical work, I can attest to, and Southwest Partners has kinda taken the lead on that, so, that is something that I've been kind of watching and helping with as well, we do have some volunteers who've kinda stepped up, which is nice, and it'll, it'll probably cause me to be able to walk and talk longer, because I don't change on the river once already, but I recovered it, so it's good, but other than that, we've got a lot going on, it's, it's really a busy time of year, a lot of activity, I know occupancy rates are strong at the lodging partners as well, so, that's kinda where we're at so far in twenty twenty-five, and just in the last couple of months.
Thank you. Ashley, do you have anything?
Sure, yeah, a couple things, our clerk, Amanda, she recently celebrated her one-year anniversary, so that's pretty exciting for her, we will be posting this week a position in the Buildings and Grounds crew, so there is a position available there, and we've established a tentative timeline for the budget process, so once we, with the Finance Committee finalize the meeting dates, those will be sent out, you know, as the mayor has talked about the last few meetings, and the importance of everybody being aware and having an opportunity to be involved, so we'll send out those meeting dates to everyone, so if you're available, you could attend those meetings as well, and then the Park Board, they did move to eliminate tent camping, so in our RV camping campgrounds, we will no longer have tent camping available, and then lastly, I think Mary will probably touch on Panorama tonight.
Yep.
Okay, so that's all I have.
Okay. Next up, Mayor and Elder Persons Committee Commission Board reports and comments and/or items to be discussed at a future meeting, Mr. Tom McCarthy.
Nothing's out there, thank you.
Rachel Schultz.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Melanie Walters.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Steve Downs.
I have nothing, I agree.
Brian Cairns.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Ron Truitt.
I'd like, Mayor, to be able to share just a few words on behalf of the Public Works Committee, of which I'm privileged to serve with Melanie and Rachel, and of course, we work very closely with Jason and Darcy, but a real key point of our discussions in recent meetings is efficiency, trying to do the very best that we can within our budget limits, our workforce, and our time, and there's been a diligent effort, and I think it's come to light in every one of our meetings, the atmosphere of cooperation, collaboration, communication between the entities of the city, and that successful effort has made a huge difference, I think, with Parks and Grounds, and Street Park, and City Utilities working together, and every resident in our city has benefited, and Jason and Scott both provided excellent examples of that tonight. Work is being done to complete an inventory on our equipment, what's current, what's not, and what can be sold, with proceeds reinvested in what's needed. Mowing is certainly an issue, and significant efforts have been tried to, made to set realistic mowing strategies, what should be mowed regularly, what should be mowed less often, in areas that do not necessarily need to be mowed. Mowing roughly three hundred acres is a huge task, made more complicated by inclement weather and equipment breakdowns, which are inevitable, no matter how good our maintenance, and we've also discussed the best practices for utilizing our seasonal workforce and the use of outside contractors, but mowing is only part of the workload, and this conversation has been had at several of our meetings, there are a host of maintenance and upkeep tasks that are needed, and on top of that, we ask our employees to assist in setting up community events, their service not only allows those events to be successful, and bring in visitors and tourism dollars, and give us events to enjoy and be proud of, but we need to remember that the time spent in that way takes away from the time to mow and do the street maintenance that we also expect to be done. Our discussions regarding efficiency have left us most recently to talk about priorities, striving to identify those things that are most pressing, and completing work and projects in descending order of importance. The challenge, though, is we all have different priorities, the problem is that unlike Jason and Darcy, we do not have big-picture knowledge to know everything that's happening in this city at any given time, and how what's happening is defining work priorities for that moment, that day, or that week. So, our committees ask tonight, on behalf of the council and the entire city, is to remember first that we have capable, dedicated employees who are truly working hard every single day, and second, our encouragement and support, combined with the same cooperation and communication that we're seeking from our employees, will make a big difference. Sharing concerns, I think, remains welcome, and always will be important, but we all need to be willing to accept the fact that there may be more pressing issues to deal with from Public Works than what we are aware. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, Ron. Karen Tepley.
Yes, I'm from the Library Board, just wanna give a shout-out to the volunteer landscaping crew that finished up the front part of the landscaping for the library, there's still gonna be some additions along the side and whatnot, so, I will have that to look forward to over the years, we also received a couple benches from the campus, so those have been put in place at the library, the library is part of the county, so that's how we were able to get the benches in the first place. Few other projects for the library, we're going to have the parking lot, not a chip seal, but coat, seal coating, done with, also the lime striping done, so the board approved that, and we'll be working with Buildings and Grounds, because there are a few little spots, so that, once again, collaboration that we like, and we'll also say that overall, the library circulation is down a little bit, and that's typical for summer, but it's always important to get the kiddos in the library to do some reading, and they, they do have a program set up for that, so, visit your library today.
Thanks, Karen. Okay, I have a few things, first of all, the fireworks went very well, a lot of compliments, Jason already mentioned that, but I've had several as well, and attendance was outstanding throughout the day, the only criticism I've seen is the event, is that one individual was upset that they ran out of the kind of beer he wanted by nine o'clock. They did not run out of beer by nine o'clock, they ran out of the kind he wanted, and I discussed it with the gentleman who caught this man's ire, that he wanted me to politely let everyone know they did not run out of beer by nine o'clock, they ran out of one. The place was hopping, I walked through, and I've never seen that many people in there, so, excellent event. Okay, next, Ashley mentioned Panorama Estates, per the agreement they have with the city, they were to have broken ground later than June fifteenth, as everyone in here knows, as you can see, if you drive up there, they did not, they have been in frequent communication, what they tell me is that they were waiting on the state to approve their amended blueprint, that when they had their plan submitted to the state, their architect found a change that needed to be made to the foundation of the building, and they've resubmitted for reapproval, and that as soon as they get that, they'll be down here to pull permits and break ground, their estimate, based on just timelines, what that takes is probably about August first to break ground, they, they're gonna need to pull permits to do that, they'll need to meet with SAVR, everybody at Utilities, Electric Sewer, Water, Public Works, Building Inspector, there's a lot to do, but they've been in frequent contact, Mr. Kleinsasser came and saw me at my day job Saturday, was all smiles, and assured me, things are progressing well, and he would do this, and I assured him that we're paying close attention, and that we will, in fact, adhere to the language in the developers' group, which we're doing. Okay, lastly, every Monday, and occasional Sundays, I walk through the Aquatic Center to see who's there, I wanna know attendance, I wanna know where people are coming from, I wanna know how the lifeguards are doing, I wanna know everything about that very sizable investment we made in our city, and I wanted to share a couple of things, I'm gonna share one, it's been all over social media, but I wanna give a quick comment, so there aren't any misunderstandings, we did have an incident at the front desk on Sunday, an individual, an adult, had paid to use the pool, had gotten in the water, decided they wanted to leave, requested a refund from the front desk, we have, the Park Board has established a no-refund policy, the young lady, who's, I don't know, fourteen or fifteen years old, told the adult that we have a no-refund policy, the adult, quote, "Two F-bombs and your little B," to the teenager working at the desk, and that will never be tolerated, ever, period, and it wasn't. Ever, period. When you're talking to a child, you're talking to a child, if you can't be an adult, don't come in the first place, thank you for your time and attention. Okay, who's come into our aquatic center? This whole town, this whole county, and in the last three Mondays, Lodi, Dodgeville, Hillsborough, Middleton, Yuba, Bluder, Muscatine, Verona, Minneapolis, and Chicago. Minneapolis and Chicago, we're here to stay at B and Bs, the B and B owners told them that we had an aquatic center, asked them if they knew it, they said they didn't, they wanna go check it out, so they did, I appreciate that, from those business owners, that's a great thing. I did hear from one B and B owner yesterday, who said they bought a pass for their business, and they send their guests on, and that's the first I heard that. Okay, so that's the two from the B and Bs, all these other towns, and I mean, other times, I've, Bearwood, Reedsburg, Cross Plains, our number-two zip code, every single year is for open, and I always ask the people from out of town, would you be in town today if we had not built the aquatic center, and it's a bare minimum of ninety percent, no, I would not. So, I'm really encouraged with who's using it, and the fact that it is bringing people to town that aren't typically visiting our town, those were the two reasons we built it, for the locals and to attract more people, and I'm excited, we've had a few preliminary conversations about working on how to maybe market that a little bit better than we are, because these, some of these people literally found it just by driving through town, going somewhere else, and they saw a yellow slide and said, what's that? So, just to put that a little bit, but I thought people should know, it's, it's pulling people from all over southwest Wisconsin, and we, the frequent comment is, Ritz and Center, you have the best pool in southwest Wisconsin, that's why we come here, and some of these people live ten minutes from the Dells, and I say, tell me why you came here instead of the Dells, because the last time I went to the Dells, we stayed in line all day and rode three times, because my kids aren't safe without me in the Dells, I can leave them in the pool here for two hours, and I can see right where they are, because I don't like to pay what it costs to go to the Dells, people ten minutes from the Dells driving to Ritz and Center, and I thought everybody in here should probably know that too. All right, that's what I had for tonight, next, Treasurers reporting.
What are you, what are you? Thank you, Marty. So, in the agenda packet, I included an agenda item data sheet with my Treasurers report on it, if you've all had a chance to review it, I included the main cash balances report, everything looks normal, it should be, same thing with the budget documents, where we were at the end of May versus year-to-date budgeted amount, nothing that stood out to me that I should bring up, had a nice conversation at Finance Committee tonight about the bill listings, and some work that I've been doing on that, and accounts receivable, if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Questions or comments, go to the Treasurers report. Okay, City Utility Treasurers report, anything there? No.
Thank you.
So, I guess maybe the one comment, the council can see the numbers, but maybe the one comment there Scott already made, which is that effort is being put into maybe getting some additional business for wastewater, and we're trying to get that done, which would be significantly impactful, all right. Okay, next, payment of bills, while the council reads through the bills, following, the bills presented on this day, excluding any library funding voices, having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee, and SAVR Committee having duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions, no adjustments are listed, it is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee, as the council is reading the bills, entertain a motion to pay them.
Motion to approve the bills.
Motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Is that good?
Second from Mr. Downs, is the discussion of the bills. Hearing done, in favor?
Truitt.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
So, Cairns.
Excellent, okay, next up, items for discussion, possible action number five, assignment of parking lot lease, who's got that one?
On that is me, yes. So, sorry, thank you, sir. So, there is a parking lot that exists by the dike, it's not useful really to anything, it's contaminated land, but there was a lease that existed, or that was started between Cornerstone and the city, it's the building, sorry, I have that up there with you and I.
We're with Ryan, and our snack was, that's what.
We're Brian, and our son, that was, that's.
Yeah, it was Center Court, like back in 99, 2000, 2001, when that building was made.
Orange and Centenary.
Yes, thank you. And so that was between Cornerstone, it since got sold to Yo-Harren in Reedsburg, and now there's a new entity that is purchasing that. The original lease agreement, which is for 99 years and started in 2001, that, in order for them to close on that property, we just need to agree to allow them to transfer the And both the new agreement that was sent by their lawyer and the original lease agreement between the city and Cornerstone is in the packet.
Which have been reviewed by Michael.
Any comment at all?
The transfer has already occurred once without input from the council, it would seem incongruous to attempt to interfere at this point.
Okay, so what we need is just a motion and a second to reassign the lease, correct?
Yes.
Okay, entertain a motion to assign a parking lot lease at, what's the name of the place now, or the address?
Um, it is, um...
Harmony Lane Holdings?
Yeah, it's, reassigning it to Harmony Lane Holdings.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. I'm going to go with Mr. Fruit, that was close. Second from Mr. Fruit, any discussion?
Do we, I didn't read through the lease, thank you, Michael, for reading through it. Do we maintain any of that or anything? That's all the lease spelled out, it's.
Correct, we don't have any obligation to maintain it, it's on them, they pay $25 a year and are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep.
Just because it's the second one in as many meetings, just a quick overview of what an assignment is, all it is is changing the names of one of the parties, I mean, it has the effect of transferring the contract, but it doesn't change any of the terms of the contract or anything like that, it just says, instead of person X or entity X, you are now in a contract with entity Y.
What year are we in on the 99?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, because it started 2001, and it's 99 years.
I would, in the future, recommend against drafting agreements for such a long duration.
It took a while for us to even find the original agreement, we had to go back to, we had to dig quite a bit to find that. And I don't think we have any documentation on the new agreement, or that, like, the existing agreement. And so this kind of is nice that at least now we have an agreement. And that, we have it, yeah, they're going to come pick that up tomorrow so they can close, they had to move their closing in order for us to do this tonight.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second, is there further discussion? Okay, let's have a roll.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Carriage.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Okay, next would be the Annual Tourism Department Report from Mr. Marty Richards.
Thank you. So, um, so real quick, if you go to the first slide, if you would, just wanted to kind of recap who our target is, what our objective is. We really, in the greater Richland area, are really an outdoor exploration destination. We're real fortunate being in the Driftless area, while I know, I've heard the mayor curse our hills a little bit, the visitors love it, and the foliage, and just the ability to get to a quiet area. So hiking, kayaking, fishing, all of the activities, but not just that, I think even as much as the activities, it's the ability to disconnect, it's to get away from people, it's to relax. We are typically looking, our target audience typically is anywhere from about 20 years old up to about 40-ish, typically folks before they've had many kids or have had kids. And then we skip a little segment, and then it kicks back in at about 55 and up. So just kind of think, if you think about who our typical audience is, those are the folks that we are targeting and we find frequent our area. We're really well suited for what the hot item is now, too, and that is outdoor exploration overall. Wisconsin Department of Tourism, two years ago, opened, started a temporary office of outdoor recreation, and now the state legislature actually funded it last year semi-permanently, right? Because things are never permanently funded, but they, it is in the annual budget now, and the outdoor recreation industry in Wisconsin in 2023 grew by 9.4%, it outpaced any other segment of industry. The good news, we're very well situated for that. Excuse me. So remember, we're talking about 2024 here, there's good reason for that. Number one, we do not get any hard evidence, it's all anecdotal until we get the data of how we did in 2024. And our curse is, is that we are at the mercy of the Department of Revenue and the Department of Tourism, and we don't get that information until June. So here we are in July with a report about 2024. So we have to go back, one more, we'll have to go back and kind of remind you of the weather. The weather impacts how our tourism season can go. And you might remember in 2024, there were, Wisconsin in general had zero snow, and we had a shot of 10 days in February where all of a sudden we had snow, and our lodging got jammed right up, and we had people from Minnesota coming here to snowmobile, which I kind of enjoyed. There's something that came out of that that was quite positive. A lot of times for those folks that I talked to, that was their first time ever coming into this area, the snowmobile, and it's very different. Any of you who've ever been up northern Wisconsin where some of them went, or northern Minnesota, it's a shot, it's a straight shot, you know, it's, go as fast as you can, as long as you can, as far as you can. They came here and learned that they couldn't do 50 miles an hour on most of our trails, or for very long, but they loved the scenery, it was awesome. So that was a nice little caveat for us, and that could pay off for us in the future. Also, spring and early summer of 2024, we got a lot of rain. I don't know if you remember this, but the pine was in a position where really for May, June, it was, there was not a lot of kayak travel on it. It wasn't until midsummer and fall to where the weather kind of flattened out, of course, then it got dry, which actually means in the fall, our fall colors were strong, we had a pretty long fall, so that, that was a benefit. And then again, in December, we, it was dry again, and so we didn't have a lot of snow in it. I need to, again, recap that with you, because weather plays into how our year is going to go. It does affect that, so go ahead. So these are the major efforts that we undertake every year. We do a lot, or focus quite a bit, on streaming, digital advertising, so people who have cut the cord and they're not getting broadcast TV, and that's a big number. There are very few people now getting just over-the-air antenna TV. So we're doing streaming advertising, so folks that have Roku, use Hulu, Amazon Prime, anything to get their content, plus on digital devices, too, we're streaming to them. I had a past resident from Richland County call me, they knew me, and they called me, and they were from southern Illinois, southern Chicago, and they said, "What the heck are you doing, getting in my space?" Because I already know what you got, but that's pretty cool that you're doing that. Also, for the first time, I was setting up at the Canoe Acopia Convention in Madison, and that's paddle sports expo for the Midwest. And there was a booth across the way from us, it's a paddle business, kayak business in Milwaukee, and the fellow running it came over and said, "I've been catching your ads." And he lived, and I was glad to hear it, because I, once he said where he lived, I'm like, "Okay, that's..." So it's kind of nice, he gives me a check that we're streaming to the right place. And he lives down in the watchtower, clocktower area by the Allen Bradley Clock, and that's one of those areas we really target, because there's a lot of folks in their 20s and 30s living there. And, oh, he's, was an outdoor enthusiast, and I thought, "All right, we're, it works, we're actually targeting who we want to." If I gave you the whole details on how that all works, the streaming advertising and targeting people, you would throw your PCs and phones away, and you can say, "Well, I'm not on social media, they won't get me." If you get on any Wi-Fi, we can find you. And I like to tell the tourism commissions, we use our powers for good, though, so. And then digital billboard advertising in Chicago and Milwaukee, we do a fair amount of digital billboard advertising, and then we do some select print advertising where they're going directly at our target folks. Milwaukee Magazine has been outstanding for us, and the reason is, they give us kind of an add-on benefit in that they also have their Instagram feed that is highly used, and they go ahead, because we're an advertiser with them on the magazine, they then give us the added value of putting us into their Instagram feed every now and then, and we have found that that pays off. And then social media, we, we're pretty heavy in Instagram and Facebook, but YouTube is, and I'll show you this a little bit in the slide coming up, YouTube is growing quickly. Google bought YouTube a while back, a couple, three years ago, and that's, and with the nature of social media today, I equate it with, you know, think of Facebook as just going into the town square and trying to find something, but yet you run into people, now pretty soon you're debating things, if it's a healthy debate, hopefully. YouTube is the hardware store, you go in and find what you want, and you don't have to cut through the noise, you just search exactly the topic you're looking for. YouTube, for the last six months to a year, has really grown, and for us, it's becoming valuable. So go ahead. Go to the next one, actually, sorry, I got them out of order, that's on me. So you'll kind of see a correlation between these next two slides, it gives you a little bit of an idea of what's happening for us. So in 2024, and this is one that Gray Media, who we do streaming with, helps us out with, because they're able to parse out what website views are actually greater is on tourism versus the city. Because remember, on the website, it's the city versus center, and tourism is actually a microsite underneath it. If we didn't have them, I would have to hire another person to figure out the Google analytics on it, because it's complex, but they can just filter it. And what's happened over the course of the last three to four years, and try to keep in mind, we started a true marketing campaign, also using that streaming advertising, at the beginning of 2022, end of, or middle of 2022. And these are all new viewers. So in 2024, we had over 80,000 new people went to our website, and that means they had not been to the website in 90 days. So typically, people, if they're interested, they get the ad, or they, they know about us, they're going to go search us, they'll look, they'll either make the decision to come, or bookmark it, or what have you, but they're not going to wait 90 days to come back to it. So this is a very large number as we continue to grow. I believe the percentage is 300%, that's correct. So if you look from when we started our marketing campaign in 2021, we've had a 300% growth in our website viewers in that three-year period, which is phenomenal. And we've been able to start using this as an indicator of how our travel season or how our year is going to go, so go back to that first one, please. So this is a report that we always wait for, and that is, this is a measurement of the amount of direct visitor spending that has happened in Richland County in a given year. So you'll see in 2024, we actually grew 1% in direct visitor spending. It wasn't a big increase, but we've got a trend, and it's an increase. And I feel really good about it, I didn't at first, and then I started talking to some folks from Grant County and Crawford, trying to kind of hear from them what happened, and they were, first thing they said, "Hey, good work, congratulations, how'd you do that?" And my question was, "What happened for you guys?", trying to kind of figure out what was going on. But you'll see, we had a 1% growth, but that's on top of two different years where we had double-digit percentage interest year growth. The only county in there that's bordering us that had a huge increase was Vernon County with a 5.3% increase. They had a 2.5% decrease last year, when we were showing a double-digit increase. So one of the explanations I got from somebody I trust from Grant County who is in leadership there, said, you know, he said, "The weather really was tough on Grant County last year." And then he kind of yelled at me because we got the snow they didn't get. And he said, "You could share the snow a little bit." And I said, "It was 10 days, you know, there wasn't much to share." So, but he said, "That isn't what grew you," he said, "That's what kept you from being, you know, negative or being flat." He said, "Your marketing..." They, they don't have a marketing campaign like we do, they are broken up by towns, so they, they don't have an overall campaign, and that's, they're talking, how do they do that? For us, those numbers are record for us, we have never strung together, and I throw out 2020, because that's, you know, 2020 was the downturn from COVID, and then 2021 is a recovery, but the 2022, 2023, and 2024, that's a record, where we've, we've never had those amount of dollars in direct visitor spending in Richland County. So every year we go up, it's another new record, we've also never had four years in a row where we've had growth. We outpaced 28 other counties in growth last year. So all really positive stuff. Real quick, I'm not going to dig into this, I can sit and geek out about analytics on websites, but this is just a little bit of a shot of our Facebook panel, and just understand, I'm sorry, this is the YouTube shot. We're currently, we're really growing, this may not sound fast, but this is really steady, nice growth. We were at 34 subscribed members at the beginning of 2024, and now at 382, but what, what's really kind of impressive here is that in the last year, people watched 264 hours of our content. And I know sometimes people see the videos that we put out there, and they're like, "Gosh, that's a lot of you out there." But we do know in social media that you have to have video content. If you put a post, if you care, if you ever put a post out there that just has text, you might, might as well not do it, it gets buried immediately. If you use photographs, that helps, but it's still not going to have much staying power. Video will grow, it keeps bringing attention to your channel, and even now, it's kind of nice, because both YouTube and Instagram has always had it, Facebook, they have reels, really short, if you can keep something under 60 seconds, it's strange how that reaches, and it gets to new people, you never would have, I mean, we're getting folks that are sharing, and now we're getting members following us from our reels that, I mean, we never would have reached them any other way. Go ahead to the next one. And then this is our Facebook analytics, we're, we are over 6,500 followers on Facebook, which for us, and when I talk to folks in this space, tourism destination marketing, they're impressed. And I'm like, "Okay, I don't know what to measure it against," but they say this, that's pretty significant. But again, you can see, we've, just in a month, you know, we had 219,000 views on all the content we put out there. So we're constantly growing, and I, I'll tell you, there's, there's no, how do I put it, there's no goal with this, it's just you've got to keep growing, because if you're not growing or putting new content out there, then you're starting to fall off their dashboard. But all good news, go ahead. So I think the only thing to cover then for me is what are our challenges, but what are our opportunities going forward? The weather, I cannot stress enough, the Pine River is very important to us, the Pine River Trail is very important to us, and if the Pine River Trail gets too much water pretty soon, I'm getting ahold of Josh Scholder and saying, "Hey, can you go down and blade that again?", because somebody will go down there and leave a divot, I think, Ron, you've experienced that, where you'll see a trail, and they were on when it was too wet. So that causes some issues, but the weather, if we could have a regular snow season, not too crazy, a regular snow season, that would be outstanding. Our lodging, and I'll, I'll bring this up, our dining options, I've never talked about this publicly. Our lodging options I've talked about, that is, we need more traditional rooms, hotel rooms, because we are struggling with groups. We do have a group, motorcycle riders coming We do have a group, motorcycle riders, coming in, but they're staying at campgrounds. That's which I'm happy about. But I have gotten calls from the Corvette Owners Group. I've gotten calls from others. If they don't look for hotel rooms in February, they cannot find a block of 15 or 20 hotel rooms in Richland Center, in the area. So, to find a block, a big block for a group, is a struggle, because we don't have enough supply. Dining options, my comment on that is, we need more unique or locally sourced dining options. We have quite a few dining options that are traditional. We do a really good job with Latin American options, that I hear really good things from our visitors. But evening casual, or maybe a next step up dining option, a steakhouse, a supper club, you know, something of that sort, that's a little more above casual, would be something that I know our visitors ask me about. So, if you know anybody with an empty checkbook, and, well, with a full checkbook, looking for deductions, it would be a really good investment. There's room for that. And then Greater Ritzon Tourism budget pressures, like everybody. We have to look, you know, year to year, what's changing, what's happening. We just have to watch that. The opportunities, we have more municipality partners already. In 2024, we added Henrietta Township. I believe Richland Township had come on as well, adopted the room tax in 2024. And we have others we're talking with in 2025. That's a long process, but we're still working at it to find others to partner with us to help get the word about the area out. I'm, I'll be honest, I'm very excited about what's happening at the AD German Warehouse right now. There is more, and this may not, this may sound like a brag, but it's not. It's just, I know the history. But there is more retail activity and energy at the AD German Warehouse now than there probably ever has been. They are doing their lounge, the AD Lounge, on Friday nights with acoustic music, which honestly is very interesting. Visitors love it. I've been in there a fair amount, met folks from all over Wisconsin and the Midwest that have found that unique and really have enjoyed it. They've also been doing art classes, so there have been some stained glass classes they've had. There's a two-day workshop coming up that they're doing. There's some nice energy and new ideas happening at the AD German Warehouse. I encourage you to go on Friday night, 3:30 to 9:00, and check it out. It's just unique. Also, Anaway, out on Highway 80 with the new ownership. I know they have a lot of ideas that they're looking at and projects they're considering that will be unique and something we've never seen before. So, stay tuned to see what they do. But we, I really get excited, because we also, so Dreflis Music Gardens has expanded their offerings over by Yuba. They're offering some single-night entertainment, where they've got big bands coming in, just for the one night. And so, they've kind of doubled their offerings, but they did it in a different way. They have three festivals throughout the year that are three-night experiences. But now, they also have added three other, single-night, where there are big bands that come in, if you're into like New American Bluegrass or New American Music. And then also Kuwaiti Farms, which is out in Henrietta Township, which is one of our, I'm sorry, Forest Township, which is one of our partners. They've been offering a lot of experiential things. So, they had a shepherdess class, how to, you know, take care of your sheep herd, which was booked. It was full, which I was a dairy guy, so sheep to me is like, we're just feeding them hay, right? But there's a lot to it, and they get a lot of folks that come for their different classes. They have a lot of different things they offer out there. So, there are a lot of things happening in the county that also look good on our ledger and help us with sharing, you know, help us with resource that also then helps us to market the things that are happening here in town. So, that's, I think, oh, I should mention, we do have also Erica Steinmetz, our first intern, has really been helpful. She went through and cleaned up all of our Wisconsin tourism. So, Wisconsin Tourism kind of has this parallel website that runs along our side of ours. And some of those listings needed to be updated. It had been a long time. And she's gone through all of them, so dining, lodging, experiences, and she's updated those. And so, we're current on anything anybody runs into for the most part. So, if it's not, then it's the interns' fault. So, it's not. It's just, I have to get her the right information. So, but she has really helped out in a big way. So, that's pretty much the report I have. I'm happy to take questions.
Marty, maybe if we talk a little bit about the replacement for Mark McCauley and the effort there?
Yeah. So, we were fortunate. There was a lot of concern this winter. Mark, like I said, had been a really good steward and had done a great job of vision and showing us the enjoyment of the Pine River. And when he was going to step away, he did a good job. He let us know. I mean, he'd been talking about it with me for over a year. And he kind of said, hey, I'm probably going to be done with this, because my body can't take it anymore. And so, we were very fortunate. Jen Frye and her dad, Dennis Frye, who many are familiar with, have taken on that effort. Jen has some plans for a campground and is working through that out on SR. But they are, they're learning, we're kind of, I'm kind of working with them, talking through how to make sure the offering suits the needs of visitors. But Jen and Dennis have taken on the kayak rental. And anymore, it's a bigger business to ferry people, to get them from, you know, one landing to where their cars are, where they left their cars when they're done. And so, and that's a, I'll tell you, that was kind of wild frontier the last few years. You could get a call at 8 o'clock at night, and you think you're done. Oh, I need a ride. And they're trying to educate their guests on, let's have some specific times, or be done by a certain time. So, there's some work to do there, and they're working on that. But we're very thankful and glad that we've got Dennis, and we have, and Dennis is on the Richland Center Tourism Commission as well. And Jen, we're taking that on. So, thanks for bringing that up, Ron.
More questions or comments for Marty? Thank you, Mr. Richards.
You bet.
All right. Next up, Finance Committee Recommendations in Action. Mr. O'Brien, Karen.
Number 7, award annual line jetting work. Finance met directly before the meeting. This has been through Public Works and moved to Finance. The landfill, every year, has to have the jetting done. And every five years, the viewing of it. So, we're just on a jetting year. Bids were sent out, and... A motion would be to award the annual line jetting work to Superior Jetting at a cost of approximately $3,950 from the landfill contract at work, line item.
We have the motion from Mr. Karen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Schultz. Is there discussion? Hearing none will need a roll call.
McCarthy.
Pardon.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Number 8, award 2025 street overlay project. Again, this is Public Works and Finance. Bids were sent out. Jason did a lot of research on what could be done between overlay or chip seal. And for the majority of our streets, chip seal is the preferred method. It saves us some money, and we'll be able to do some more streets. My motion would be to award the 2025 street overlay project using chip seal to farm asphalt sealers at a cost of $256 a square yard for single seal and $505 a square yard for double seal with an expenditure amount not to exceed $105,000.
Okay, we have the motion from Mr. Karen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Tepley. Is there discussion? All right, hearing none will need a roll call.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Pardon.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Number 9, award Church and East Court Parking Lot Repaving Project. The Fire Department had received a grant from DL Gasser to pave a portion of their lot. And at the same time, the city parking lot is next to it. So, Jason did his due diligence, got this sent out. Gasser was the only one that bid it, correct?
Right.
And since they're doing the grant, it makes sense for them to have to do the work. So, my motion would be to award the Church and East Court Parking Lot Repaving Project, DL Gasser Construction, at a cost of approximately $32,340,000 from public roadways.
We have the motion from Mr. Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs. Is there discussion? Hearing none will need a roll call.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Pardon.
Schultz.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Number 10, Streets Request for Endloader Repair. Again, this has been through Public Works and Finance. The newest end loader, the 2010 John Deere 624 that the city has, the engine had a failure. Jason, again, did his due diligence, looked at several different options from replacing it to leasing. With the age of the loader and the condition it's in, the best decision was to replace the engine. So, my motion will be to approve the engine replacement for the John Deere Model 624 K end loader at an approximate cost of $33,000 from cash on hand.
We have the motion from Mr. Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Walters. Is there discussion? Hearing none will need a roll call.
Downs.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Pardon.
Schultz.
Aye.
Sorry, this, Walters. Motion is carried.
Okay.
Number 11, Buildings and Grounds Request for Mower Repair. Again, through Public Works and Finance. One of the Ferris zero-turn mowers, the, there was an engine failure. Again, Jason looked at the different options and the condition of the mower and what it does. The best option was to replace the engine. My motion would be to approve the repair of the Ferris mower at a cost of approximately $4,100 from Building Property Equipment Maintenance Repair.
All right, we have the motion from Mr. Karen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That was definitely Ms. Schultz. Is there discussion? Hearing none will need a roll call.
Schultz.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Number 12, donation of dugouts for Crossco Park Softball Fields. Again, been through Public Works and Finance, and I know Rick Muriel is here that has been heading up this project. Would you like to say a few words of what you've been doing and how we're at here?
Hold on. It's microphone. Microphone invisible.
Oh, sorry. Forgot to have.
Yeah, flip the button up there. There you go.
I'm Richard Muriel, with Part of the Knights of Columbus. I've been doing concession stands on Saturday for fall for soccer, for eight games. And in spring, I did five games. And then, True Week Softball, Tuesday nights, I started that, too. And also, I did Share Night, June 18th, for callers. I raised, somebody was looking for a concession stand, somebody to do it, so I stepped up to it. So, I got four new dugouts in Crossco Park. And I probably raised over $6,000 already. I don't know about Sherry yet, so. And Jason then worked with me for designing the dugouts and everything, too. So, it's going a really good project. I want to see park improve a little bit better from doing it.
That's great. Thank you, Rick.
Yep. Any questions?
So, you can see in your packet, the sheet that Jason put together, some, these are, which field is that on?
These are the youth baseball fields, and they're dugouts that are existing. But it just kind of gives you a concept of what we'd be doing. And in the case on the front fields that Rick's working on, we primarily have to stay with the roof because of the proximity to Highway 14, and then we want to keep continuity through the field. So, we've still got a little bit of work to do on the design, but it'll give them good overhead cover. We're working on new concrete slabs, so Rick's working on that part, too. So, all in all, it will standardize the dugouts, make them good cover, and should be really nice upgrade to the field.
And it's roughly a $12,000 non-monetary donation that the Knights of Columbus is putting together to make this happen.
They're probably $6,000 a piece, but that's not cooing the concrete. It's east and west hanging, too.
Thank you. So, my motion would be to approve the Resolution 2025-07 Acceptance of Non-Monetary Donation by the Knights of Columbus for the Ball Field Dugouts.
The motion from Mr. Karen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Downs got that one. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none will need a roll call.
Fruit.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Pardon.
Tepley.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Number 13, the WEDC Community Development Investment Grant Award Update and Moratorium. We discussed this at Finance previously. We had paused it in regards to what was going on with the hotel development. And Jason, do you want to touch base on Ellers and where we're at with that right now?
Yeah, sure. So, I've received, anyone be talking to the mic. So, we received a communication from Keith at Ellers this week that said that they had sent out to the developers that they had completed their financial analysis. They're currently working on writing the report summary portion for us to review. So, they suggested that they should have that complete this week, at which point we'll get the review, the report. We'll review it internally, then have a conversation with the mayor, and then figure out how he'd like to proceed. And then, it sounds like maybe we'd have a special session to review the information that we've been provided.
Thank you. May I have a cue? Remind me my motion for Finance for this one?
Yes. You, um, sorry. Motion to extend the memorandum on accepting or processing new community development investment CDI grant applications until a financial analysis on the proposed hotel development has been, I don't think we said completed.
Yeah.
But.
Was it till we had direction on hotel, we're going?
Till you reviewed what Ellers had.
Yeah, what direction we're going. So, that would be my motion.
A motion from Mr. Karen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Tepley. Is there discussion? Hearing none will need a roll call.
Tepley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Pardon.
Motion is carried.
All right, that puts us at Public Safety Committee Recommendations in Action. Mr. Ranshur.
Rachel Smith has submitted a cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device retail license application from Dairyland Days LLC, relocated at 130 West Court Street in Richland Center. Her application was reviewed and approved by Chief Jones of the Richland Center Police Department. The Safety Committee looked at it last night. All three members approved as well. So, my motion is to approve this application for Dairyland Days LLC.
Okay, we have the motion from Mr. Fruiser. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Where is this located?
It would be at the Mendel Barber's location, West Court Street, just up from the Red Door Gallery.
I got you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Let's go ahead and just do a roll call.
Go on. Tepley.
Aye.
Karen.